Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Danville City Commission meeting for tonight, Monday, September 10th, 2018. The hour is 5:31. So I will call this all to order, and I will ask that our prayer be led by Commissioner Atkins.
Let's pray. Most gracious and always wise God, we thank you for this another beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity to assemble peacefully, and we pray that what we do tonight will be pleasing in your sight. These are all of the blessings I ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. I have the pleasure of having the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Ben Grant. Ben, would you come forward and lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ben. Now, one order of business before we get going. I don't see the city, not the city attorney, but one of the city's attorneys from Lexington with us. So we're going to proceed with the agenda as presented. However, if he gets here, and we're going to break because at the hourly rate, we don't see any need for him to spend an hour in the seats and paying, city paying that kind of money for him to enjoy our company. So just a little heads up on that. Uh, Commission, you've got the agenda. I assume it meets your approval. That said, we're in the section called "Here the Public," and that is the public's opportunity to speak on any item that is on the agenda. There'll be an opportunity later to speak on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Anyone want to speak on a topic that is on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right on to Item 1, which is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. That meeting being August 27th.
We had an amendment to that, did we?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the meetings, or the meeting of August 27th as amended and presented.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cardle, Commissioner Searis. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 2 is the proclamation of the National Senior Citizen Month. Allow me to read that. Is there anyone here to receive that plaque or proclamation?
Ben.
Ben, I don't consider you to be a senior citizen, but hey, you're getting there.
Yeah, why don't you bring your dog?
You should have brought both.
He's often dogs better received than I.
Whereas the month of September is designated as National Senior Citizen Month, and older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and better the lives of younger generations. And whereas, the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizens Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Danville, Kentucky. And whereas, through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizens Center empowers older adults to contribute to their own health and well-being and the well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas, the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizens Center in the city of Danville, Kentucky, affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Whereas, the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizens Center provides opportunities for seniors to stay active and healthy, continue learning, share experiences, and stay connected with friends and community members. And whereas, the mission of the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizens Center is to provide senior adults and adults with special needs a range of services, activities, and opportunities to promote growth, health, friendship, and independence in a safe, fun, family atmosphere. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor G. Michael Paris, and the City Commission of the city of Danville proudly proclaim September as National Senior Citizen Month in the city of Danville. And in an effort to acknowledge the importance and the many contributions of the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizens Center, call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older adults of our community on this 10th day of September 2018.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all. I want to thank the city of Danville for recognizing the seniors of Danville and Boyle County and for all you've done to support us. And just wanted to give you, if I may, I have about 30 seconds, just to give you a little snapshot of what's been going on since July the 1st, when we became the recipient of the Title III federal funding. As of July 1st through today's date, we have delivered in homes in Boyle County 2,489 hot meals. That's in just a little over two months' time, 2,489 meals. We've served 794 meals on-site, and we have provided transportation opportunities in excess of 2,100 rides. We've given 2,122 rides in a little over two months to assist the seniors in this community for their activities of daily living. And we would be unable to do that without the support of the entire city, the entire county, and especially the support of our elected officials here at the city of Danville. So on behalf of the seniors of the city of Danville, I want to thank you all for your belief in our mission and helping us spread the message of our mission in the community. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
No questions, but the comments are all, as you've done a great job in taking over that Senior Citizens Center.
Well, thank you. And we are going to be having a couple of fundraisers in the future, one for breast cancer awareness, and then we're going to have a special lunch on the 26th of this month for our seniors in honor of Senior Citizen Month, and I'd like to invite you all to attend. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir, please.
I move, do we accept the proclamation, recognizing National Senior Citizen Month?
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 3 is the Danville Smoke-Free Tenure Celebration in recognition of Roger Trent. And I guess Brent, you and Roger, want to come forward?
Mayor, would you mind if I do this one?
I'd be honored.
Friend of mine for a long time. Thank you.
You're one friend.
One friend.
Yeah, exactly.
Rick, is it all right if I say a few words before you get going? I wanted to take it a chance publicly to give everybody, just from a health director's perspective, of what Roger went through when he was doing this, and I know Rick will do the same thing with this, to tell you how much this man went through. He did this in 2008 with the help of the commission, really proud of that, and a lot of people in the city. But all the things, if you looked at the article recently in the Avocan Messenger that were said about him and to him, in 2011, when I started, we were still getting envelopes in the mail with people upset about that. And from my perspective, what that means is Roger had the fortitude to just keep going with it because he believed in it, and it was something that was great for our community. It was a true asset to us. Other communities look to us now as an example of what that happened. And I think it's only fitting that even though it was a community-wide thing, that we really recognize what Roger did for this, because it was truly an amazing piece of work that he did for this and that he continues to help us do in the fight for this. So Roger, thank you from the Health Department. Definitely appreciate it, and Rick, you have it.
So like I said, Roger and I have been friends for a long time. So I was with him during this fight, and it was tough on him because people do have their own, they have their own choices in life. But the fight was more about that. It was about people that were surrounded by folks that were smoking and stuck in restaurants and so forth. So we congratulate him on that, and we're going to do that right now. All right. In honor of Roger Trent, whereas Roger Trent, retired Boyle County Health Department Director, spearheaded the effort in February 2008 to request that the city of Danville pass a resolution in support of the development and adoption of a smoke-free ordinance in Danville, Kentucky. And whereas, the city of Danville passed the resolution on February 26th, 2008, in support of the development and adoption of a smoke-free Danville ordinance. And whereas, the city of Danville adopted ordinance number 1733 in May 2008, which was an ordinance related to the protection of public health and welfare by regulating smoking in public places and places of employment in Danville, Kentucky. And whereas, Roger Trent was instrumental in the city of Danville becoming among one of the first communities in the Commonwealth of Kentucky to take such action. And whereas, the city of Danville has been a smoke-free community for 10 years, enhancing the quality of life in the community, and further passed a smoke-free cigarette policy in 2015. And whereas, Roger Trent was an integral part of the development, implementation, and support of the ordinances passed by the city of Danville. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city of Danville Board of Commissioners on September 10th, 2018, wish to thank Roger Trent for his efforts in leading the charge to help Danville become a smoke-free community, which has enhanced the quality of life for all citizens in Danville, and would urge all citizens to celebrate the 10-year celebration of being a smoke-free community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If I might make a few comments real quickly. This ordinance was passed with the help of three city commissioners, who I can't help but mention, Terry Crowley, Janet Hamner, and Gail Lewis. Without the support of those three people, despite my efforts, this ordinance would not have passed. So please recognize those people as well as myself. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you, sir.
Item 4. Ms. Lisa Nessie is here to get the request of the Steel, Chamber of Commerce Steel Challenge banner.
Yes, we're just requesting.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. You all didn't approve the last proclamation.
Oh, excuse me.
I move that we accept the proclamation as read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Cardle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. I'm just here to request that we be able to put a banner up front in front of the city hall for the Chamber of Commerce's Steel Challenge fundraiser.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the banner request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
What is the Steel Challenge?
It's a shooting event that you shoot at targets, and it's a timed event. So the lowest time gets the most points.
Do I get to pick out who I shoot? No.
It's teams of four, so grab your three closest friends and come on down.
Steel target.
Steel targets.
If you want to go write somebody's name on it.
We can volunteer your silhouette to be a target.
Can you tell us where it'll be held and when?
It'll be held on October 6th at Sugar Creek Range. It's in Garrett County, the ranges.
And Ron and I will see you there.
Yay. Okay.
How fast can I run, huh?
So, do we hear a motion? Did we, do we already do that?
We did.
Great, all right.
We need both.
And is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Item 5 is the Energy Efficient Report from our folks at Harshaw Train. We have Amanda Gardner with us tonight.
Hello.
Good evening.
I believe Donna included a copy of my report in your packet. What I've done is just included what new updates since my last report to the board. Here at city hall, we've continued to correct some comfort issues we've had. We also installed a new heat pump in 911 dispatch, which I think they're very happy about now. We are moving right along with our building automation. We have remote connectivity, and we've just started repairing a little place in the wall on the front vestibule where we have some condensate drippage. Coming up, we have, we're finishing up the graphics, and we should be doing owner training on the VAS system this month. And then any punch list items that occur, obviously, we'll take care of those. Moving on to Community Arts and Fire Station Number 2, we, at all of our sites, and thanks to Nick and his team for making that happen, we have remote connectivity to all of your sites, and so we'll be doing the VAS integration and the owner training this month on those. At Millennium Park, we have installed some transformers, which updated the voltage to the sports lighting. The sports lighting is set for installation to begin on September 17th with completion targeted for month end. They say seven to 10 days, but as you know, the weather this summer could or could not Again, parking garage and transportation office, we've got some reprogramming of the lights, so it'll be consistently illuminated throughout the facility there, and then we'll pull all that into the system and do our own air training with those individuals. Finally, and on the big one for you all, on the water meter project, the census, who is the vendor of the meters, did a study prior to the project's beginning that said a radio installed at the Fourth Street water tank should give us coverage at 6,139 meters. As of today, we have 6,776 meters actively reading, so the system is operating even better than we thought it was. So we still have a few more punch list items to do with the water meter project, but all in all, I think we're in a very good spot. I think meter shop Chris and his team are pretty happy to not having to be manually reading all those meters now.
So are they all on radio read now?
There are about 150 that remain. That's going to be a subject of discussion with Earl later this week on how we're going to approach those. But even without those, we're way above, considerably above where we thought we'd be geographically. So, very happy.
Could you, or yourself, or Earl, make a comment about the accuracy of this metering system compared to what we had?
These meters are very accurate, hence the reason for the upgrade. It not only saved your city employees time and effort, but the measuring device within those meters is a lot more accurate than what you previously had. So I think it, if you want to speak to it, if you can clarify any on that.
The, the way the meter is made, it doesn't, the historical meters are mechanical. This is electronic, and so it's a magnet, so it's frictionless, and it's not going to wear as the old meters slow down, as the mechanisms inside of the old meters wore, they slowed down over time. So you would get a progressively less accurate, so your meter would slow down. So the customer, in essence, would get water that the meter wasn't picking up. But, so that's a benefit to the city. Benefit, the biggest benefit to the customer is it's a step in the direction of doing, going away from the bi-monthly billing at some point in the future as we change softwares. You know, that is something that both Michelle and I are actively talking about, how we do that transition, again, at some point in the future. But also, we get an exception report now every morning that indicates high usage through the night on certain meters, and so that's, so Chris's staff's job is reorienting to different tasks, and one of which is pilfering through the alarm list every morning on the meters. The target of this project was inside of the city limits because that was your highest density of meters. And so this meter count reflects what is inside, essentially what is inside of corporate limits. Chris has done some study already, and we do think that there's meters that, for example, we think on the south end, you'll be able to start picking up meters south of town beyond the city limits in the future. So there's a lot to it that we think will be an advantage in the future towards saving money, and it's an advantage for the customer because they can see their information more easily on a continuous basis. And so it's a great project when well, very well needed, very much needed.
It allows Chris, I mean, he'll really be able to see if somebody has a leak. And if we think water usage is strange, we can look at peaks, we can look at dates. You know, if somebody sees a really high bill, we can look and say, okay, these are the dates. And if they say we were on vacation, then Chris can tell them, okay, well, then we've got something funky going on here. It has a lot of benefits. It also has benefits to the city in that it gives a list of inactive meters with usage. So if you've turned off a meter and somebody snuck out there and turned it back on, you're going to be alerted. So it has a lot of benefits. The system does a lot. It's just learning how to use the system and then learning how to use the system to its, in the most advantageous way.
Certainly, one of the reasons this commission went forward with the project was to be able to detect leaks ahead of time and not have somebody get hit with a big bill because they were on vacation, had a constant water leak going. I think the shock right now is if they're more accurate, they're getting some high bills, and we're hearing about that. But, so I guess, I guess I'm trying to say is it's, we're just charging for the water. There's not some extra tax put on there or something for the installation?
No. The old impellers were very limited in really what they could read, so small amounts, a lot of times just weren't read in those old meters, which they're being caught now with these new meters, because that electromagnetic field picks up everything that goes through. So, you know, trickles add up. We all know that.
Anything else, ma'am?
Not for me, unless you all have questions.
Questions?
I think so.
Comments?
Thank you all very much.
We thank you. Safe travels. Bye.
Thank you.
Next is a report on code enforcement. Ms. Lester.
Good evening. For the month of August, we issued 43 business licenses. We are even busier this month with business licenses. We have pending fines of $1,000, which is where we're utilizing our ordinance that you all passed last year. And we had 81 parking citations that we issued and 214 inspections, complaints, and notice of violations for the month of August. Entertain any questions you might have.
This is always fun. You've, I've circled a few things. Again, business licenses are up, or not up, but they're, they're pretty consistent. So up at the top on Grass and Weeds 53, I guess rainy summer, and we've had to jump in and help people?
Yes.
That's a pretty, that's a pretty high number.
Well, we don't always have to mow them, but we, a lot of times we have to issue the notice of violation to notify someone they need to mow. But sometimes we do, and then we have to put a lien on the property.
And just for fun, I know some steelness from somebody.
Go right ahead.
But we've got animal complaints, two swans. You want to talk about that? I think that's kind of interesting.
I don't know. I can't tell you the story about that one. I didn't hear about that one. I'll have to check on it and get back to you.
You sure that wasn't just a high school jinx or something?
I don't know.
Make sure they weren't those plastic ones.
That's possible.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Lester? Thank you, ma'am. We look forward to your report on the swan.
I'll let you know about the swans. I think I'm next up, too.
Yes, you are. This is in regards to Resolution 2018-09-10-01. This is the FEMA contract amendment.
This just goes back to the 2009 ice storm, and that project still has not closed out, so there's still a few project worksheets out, and so we need to just get permission to sign this contract to continue that.
Is it, is it a case that we've completed the work, they have not reimbursed us?
Yes.
And that amount is?
It's small. I don't remember the total, but we've gotten the majority of the money that we outlaid for that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion from the commission regarding this resolution?
I move for approval of Resolution 2018-09-10-01.
Thank you, Mr. Cardle. Anyone else? Second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Item 8 is the City Manager Report.
Mayor and commissioners, tonight I do not have an additional specific city manager's report to present. I would, however, in keeping with the mayor's suggestion earlier, that we have an executive session. We do need to have an executive session tonight to deal with personnel matters and to deal with property acquisition, and our attorney, Charlie Cole, from the Lexington Law Firm, is Sturgill, Turner, Barker, and Maloney is present. But if I may, as a courtesy to our other citizens, maybe the time for that would be after "Here the Public."
After.
And maybe you'd already thought of that.
Yeah.
But we need to go into executive session for those two reasons.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are now in the section called "Here the Public." This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium to talk to the commission and staff about any issue that's not been presented on tonight's agenda. Your name, please, sir?
Jerry Wilson. I'm from Justice City, and we've been noticing our sewer bill is ridiculously high, where it's causing a big problem in my community. You've got people that's on social security and stuff. By the time they pay their rent or stuff, they can't even afford to eat on. It's just ridiculously. When you talk about 200 to 500, $600 water bills, it's ridiculous. And we need something done about it. To me, it's a humanitarian reason, because you've got diseases, stuff like that, not bathing right, or not even any worse, because it's basic human rights. We should not be going through this. And it ain't only our town, it's Purple, too. So I ask y'all to try to do something to help lower the sewer bill, so people can't afford to live.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anyone else? Mr. Knight, or Ms. Wilson? Let's let, ladies first.
Your honor, I just have an issue with what was said tonight.
Your name, please?
Michelle Wilson.
Yes.
Okay, the new water meters are supposed to save money. Who are they saving money? They're not saving the customers' money. I have my water bills right here. They are not saving the customer any money. It was a nice try. Atlanta, Georgia, installed the same kind of meters and took them out because they were reading double. You heard me correctly, double. If someone's water bill is the same as their house payment, and you all are quick to come out and shut the water off, that is a humanitarian issue, and you need to rethink your policies, please. Thank you for your time.
So noted. Thank you for yours. Mr. Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Steve Knight. I hadn't actually intended on talking about that at all, so just to be real brief, but there have been issues with the meters that are being installed in other communities as well, in California and some other places, so it certainly would be worth a review of that, considering the people that are being impacted by the elevated water and sewage bills, because it is a major issue, as you all are well aware, but especially in Junction and Purple, they're really being, getting hit, so it would be certainly worth a review of that. What I did come to speak about is probably within about three weeks, about the first of October, and you may have seen some of these letter, I don't know, I haven't heard anybody mention it, from the cable company about they're switching to an all-digital service, and those people that are using analog, basic, or extended cable services will have their service turned off without the purchase of an additional piece of equipment, which may not be super expensive, but it's still, you know, it's just another thing that's being piled on people that they're being asked to pay for. And... And, you know, this, again, it's, it's something that probably should be looked at and whether that falls under the franchise agreement, if there's something that could be done there because I do think it's unfortunate that, I think there are people going to wake up on October 1st or around that, that date and they're not going to have cable service anymore that they're paying for because of the lack of this hardware device. So, I would like to encourage you all to work with the cable franchises or the cable people and see what possibly could be done in that arena. And also, I just noticed in, in the cable franchise that there's supposed to be a person that handles complaints and that sort of things here with the city. And maybe Mr. Scott could, could tell me who that was, but I've been unable to this point to find out who that person is supposed to be that, that citizens would direct complaints to. And it is in the franchise agreement that that person, position exists. So, if, if that person doesn't at this point, then that's, you know, that's, that's a point of confusion when you come in, nobody can tell us who, that we need to talk to when we have complaints about the cable system. So, that's something else maybe to address. But I do think even though it is a relatively minor equipment expense, the fact that they're going to have to, to outlay that and then install it, a lot of our elderly folks, I work with them in technology issues all the time, they're going to have trouble with this and it's, it's unfortunate.
Let Mr. Scott answer here.
Well, that person would be me in terms of directing complaints. And I have received over the past six or nine months, probably six complaints. And I, I think you're right, there will be more complaints as knowledge of the, of the access box is, is discussed. And our city attorney and myself are planning to look at the franchise because we have a timeline to renew that franchise prior to December 31 of 2018. And there's two ways of doing that, and we've yet to discuss the best way of doing that, which could involve some extended conversation with the company.
Yeah. I, I hope that conversation will take place and maybe even suggest that the company as large as spectrum possibly even pick up the cost of, or waive that or something just so the, the folks around here are not impacted as, as heavily. And so, anyway, that's all I had. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. As indicated at the beginning of the meeting and just a few moments ago, our attorney has arrived from Lexington. So, we're going to, I'm going to hear a motion.
Mayor, excuse me, I think there's others that may still want to be speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Wilma, how could I? Shame on me. I didn't see your hand earlier. I apologize. And while we're waiting, is there anyone else that would want to speak? Okay, thank you.
Walk up here and smack him first.
Well, he missed me because I'm so quiet and shy all the time and it's hard to, you know, hard to find. Thank you. Yeah, right. Six and a half years ago, I stood at this very podium and talked about the exact subject that I'm, I'm going to talk about tonight. And that is the need, I'm Wilma Brown, by the way. That is the need for a separate committee to oversee the installation of art in public places. Six and a half years ago in 2012, the arts, the city commission decided that they had enough committees and they didn't want to set up a separate one. So, they asked the arts commission to set up an ad hoc committee that could be used at any time that they needed it for public art. They also asked them to draw up a document and the arts commission, arts commission did. And the document that they drew up was approved unanimously by the city commission. That's in the minutes. But a few months later, when the subject came up again, Mr. Dexter indicated that because no city committee had been set up by ordinance, that the ad hoc committee had no official function as far as the city was concerned, and also the document had no official function. So, here we are again today talking about the same thing. So, I want to talk about, hope that you can set up a separate committee, separate from the, separate from the Architectural Heritage Board. And I do know that the Community Arts Center has also offered to help in this, but I think that would take us right back to 2012 when another arts organization wanted to help with this. And so, I'm asking for a separate committee. This committee will not just show up at the last minute and decide whether or not a piece of art should be installed. They'll help with a lot of things, including working with the artist and the, the paying entity and also the owner to talk about the durability of materials, the installation procedures, the effective placement of a piece of art. It might be too big, too small, it may have obstacles in front of it. They'd talk about copyright infringements or something that might be culturally offensive. And then they would talk about if it's publicly funded, if a call to artists had been put out so that various artists could submit designs. So, all of this would be done by this type of committee. I also think there ought to be more than artists on there simply because there are so many different things that public art covers. So, I appreciate your time tonight and I hope that you will consider this so that I won't have to come back six and a half years again. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
My name is Deanna Hargus. I live at 329 Ghost Pike. I am here tonight to talk about the traffic on Ghost Pike. My husband and I have custody over five grandchildren and therefore, three buses in the morning, three buses in the afternoon are stopping at my house. There's been one or more occasions that cars have had to go into a ditch, into our yard, or turn over to Boffman Avenue to keep from hitting cars that were stopped behind the bus. Two weeks ago, I was about hit. I had to jump back away from the oncoming car because he totally disregarded the bus and the flashing lights. This is a sore spot with me simply because I see so many get hurt. I've luckily not seen any deaths, thank God for that. But my mother did get hit and she was hit so hard that it pushed her car past our drive when she was trying to pull in. I went to the city, the city police department, and I talked to Officer Gray. And Officer Gray told me that there's just not enough officers for traffic control. And I have a problem with that because, you know, there's times when I see four or five police officers at a traffic stop or, you know, somebody pulled over for whatever reason. If, if some lights or more signs, you know, making the, the traffic aware that buses will be stopping, you know, more police officers making theirself known, you know, as much as possible would be a great help. I can sit on my front porch and tell you that somebody is sitting down there watching the traffic because everybody is slow-going. Allen Company, the Blacktop Company, the Coell Stone, you know, their trucks are up and down that road multiple times during the day. And they come up over that hill flying and they're not going to be able to stop if the bus has stopped in front of my house. And I'd hate to see what this mama would do if something happened to my babies. If you all would please consider finding, uh, something, doing something to help with this problem because it's gotten worse over the past couple of years. And I understand that, that the police department is short-staffed, I guess, but something has to be done. It's a dangerous road and it's a very, very high-traffic road if you've never been on it. And somehow, Magistrate Sammons found out that I had came and voiced my opinion about the, the road and he stopped down at Pittman Creek and sat and came up to my house and he said, "You have a valid, a valid concern." He seen what I was talking about. So, if something can be done, if there's something I can help do, I mean, I'd be more than happy.
Hey, Earl, is that a, is that a city road, county road, state road?
It's a city street. Ghost Pike from Stanford Road is a city street.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that the, the 18-wheelers that come down through there, I mean, the, the road's not big. Can they be, I mean, can it be considered detoured for them? You know, I know, I know that it's a pass-through. I know that it's a, a, you know, short to get from the highway to where they're going. But, I mean, they pass each other and they hit the ditches. One didn't even make it and his, his gravel truck almost turned over, you know, in the ditch, just trying to keep from hitting another. So, thank you.
Thank you.
They should be, the trucks should be.
No, I agree. Now, I think that's the last of folks to "Here the Public," right? Right. So, do, do I hear a motion that we move into executive session?
I wasn't going to make that motion. I was just going to point out that Commissioner Cottle is wearing Boyle County colors tonight because although we had a.
We did that after we came back out.
Although we had a good, UK had a good game over the weekend, the weekend before was also a, a good game, so.
I hope.
You can make your motion now.
Thank you. We're personelling and we are property acquisitioning. Make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 618101F. And a motion to go into executive session regarding potential real estate acquisition for which publicity at the present time might or would likely affect the value for KRS 618101B.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Discussion?
Did that motion, I didn't clearly hear it, did that motion also include personnel?
It did.
Thank you.
And mayor, I should also note, since Mr. Cole here is representing the city on both the personnel matter and I presume the potential property acquisition as well, I will not retire with the commission into executive session.
Any further discussion?
So, he's taking himself off the clock.
Yeah, let the record know that I did not say that.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. We're in executive session. Well, now that we are back and we've all had our punch and cake, we're, we're on our sugar high.
That's, that's what that whole thing was for. That's how we did.
That's right. Do I hear a motion that we move back into regular session?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry and Commissioner Cottle. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. The motion carries.
We have two items to report with action requested by the city commission. The first is the employment action regarding the recommended employment of a certified police officer, Mr. Nathan Brown. And I would ask our human resources director to give you that resolution.
My staff.
Madam clerk, please.
Staff would ask that you rehire Nathan Brown to the position of certified police officer with the usual probationary measures.
And when you say rehire, where, where was he?
He was a Dambel police officer. He chose to go, he wanted to pursue a dream of being a Kentucky State Trooper. He went to the academy, left us, and went through the state police academy. And when he was finished, decided that it wasn't for him, so he wants to come back to Dambel.
Great. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved to accept the reemployment of the police officer.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sears, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Welcome him, we welcome him back.
Yes.
Continue on, Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. The second topic of, of conversation is the important topic of our construction or renovation of our central fire station. You might recall, and the citizens might recall, that we began this, examination of this question in December of 2016. And I'm going to give just a brief comment or two, then, then ask our city engineer to comment upon that process. But before I do that, I would, I would like to say, just for the commission's, refresh your knowledge and certainly that of the public, that, you know, we, we hired special counsel to deal with the effort to create a tax increment financing district surrounding the, potentially surrounding the existing location of our old fire station. And that process is still underway as, as an attempt to provide incentives where private enterprise could develop in that blighted area. In that process, we made the affirmative decision to exclude our city attorney from participation because we retain special counsel who've had special expertise in that topic. And along that similar line of thinking, as we began looking at a variety of properties to consider for the possible purchase to construct a new fire station, as we kind of worked our way through the process and recognized that the existing location was simply too small. And Earl will elaborate on our many months of effort to try to acquire property to expand at that location, which ultimately proved unsuccessful. But in that process and in the subsequent discussions regarding other potential properties, we recognized as staff that we live in a small town, that there are potential conflict of interest that may exist in our small community. And our law firm does actually, as a matter of their regular practice, deal with a lot of property transactions. And so, from the day one of beginning this process, we made, I made the, the decision to basically exclude our city attorney from that process. And so, I say that just for the record as we begin our discussion tonight. And, and with that, I'll, I'll ask Earl to give a review of our efforts over these past many months.
Thank you, Ron, commission. And as Ron just mentioned, in December of 2016 is when the city began working with the architect Brevira to evaluate and, and guide us through the process of programming and thoughtful design of renovations to or reconstruction of the downtown fire station that's known as Central Station. The first step in that project was to complete a review of the existing property. The, through a review and assessment and then some other observations made by staff, we completed some temporary shoring to the rear wall of the existing structure. There's two bay doors there. There's indications that the rear wall's in a state of, of collapse, that is where it will continue to degrade over the course of time. So, we did some temporary shoring to try to delay that inevitability, what we felt like was an inevitability. The architect went through the process of auditing the structure internally, the HVAC systems, electrical systems, and through a recommendation here at a city commission meeting, recommended that the commission raise the existing structure on that site. Since that time, city staff and with, under the direction of Ron, we have been looking at how to best fit a fire station either on that site or at a different location through, throughout town. The site across the street is restricted both in rear access and also horizontal access both to the east and west. The property, the existing structure is built to the property lines basically in both directions on the east side and west side. It does not, the site, the way it currently is configured, does not allow for through access from Main Street to the rear of the building. And so, therefore, given the need that you had to increase the square footage of the structure, that site prevents you from renovating the building without the acquisition of some property either to the east or to the west. east or to the west. As that process began, both Ken and I and Ron, we have talked about and reviewed many other properties. Some of these properties that we looked at, we considered several factors or characteristics for each site. Those locations included appropriateness for a fire station, cost to develop the property, cost of the property itself, access into the property and around the property, service capacity from the station, which affects our ISO rating, which better stated is the response time from the property to various parts of town. We have done several, not necessarily time studies, but distance studies with drawings and where we have located properties and looked at service radiuses, radii, from those locations. We have spoken with many different property owners to evaluate motivation of sellers, whether or not individuals would be willing to dispose of their property for the city's benefit at whatever price. Some of the properties, city staff took a step and had an appraisal done, gave those to the city manager for consideration. We have identified fourteen properties on a memo to you that are not precise in detail on which ones they were, but we have included those as a list to illustrate the depth of our investigation in terms of looking at all available property that we felt like either was currently available or could be made available for the city's purpose. With that, we passed by a site located at 461 West Main Street about, near the beginning of our discussion. We passed through that. We circled back around to that site and evaluated it again. We left it again. We went to a different location, and we came back a final time within the last probably six weeks. Is that fair, Ron? And with that, then, we, this site rose to the top as best fit. It was best fit because it provided the best property size in terms of acreage, the best shape. It is a, closer to a square. It fits our dimensions that the architect has given us. It has the best access, considering the limitations of the other sites particularly. It provides, again, the best layout. It also has some adjacency to the existing emergency services of the city, which is the police and now dispatch, which is our other vital operations. It is the property that does have a motivated seller, and it results in the net cost during construction being slightly lower because we do not have to temporarily relocate the existing fire department during construction. So, city staff at this time is presenting to you, through the city manager, a recommendation that we acquire what we identified as Site E, which is 461 West Main Street. We gave that to the city manager about six weeks ago with, as our final recommendation, and I think the city manager has contracted sale to present you.
Thank you, Earl. I do have a resolution number 2018-09-10-05 that is entitled "A Resolution Approving a Contract for the Purchase of Real Property." Would you entertain that as a resolution to be considered tonight?
I stick with the commission, yes.
You're the commission.
Well, this resolution number 2018-09-10-05 is entitled "A Resolution Approving a Contract for the Purchase of Real Property," whereas the city has agreed to enter into a written contract regarding the purchase of real property located at 451 West Main Street and 461 West Main Street. And let me add, the city hasn't agreed to enter into that at this present time, but if you do agree to do so, you would presumably adopt this resolution. Now, therefore, a bit resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville, Kentucky, that the proposed contract of sale with Robert Finley Hendrickson, Brenda W. Hendrickson, Mark S. Dexter, Julie A. Dexter, Tim B. Dexter, Ellie Mae Dexter, and Sam Dexter Insurance Agency, Inc., for the acquisition of property at 451 and 461 West Main Street, along with all necessary easements pertaining thereto, which will serve as the location of the city's fire, new fire station, is hereby approved for the considered, consideration amount of $1,150,200, and that the mayor or mayor pro tem is hereby authorized to execute said contract dated this 10th day of September 2018. I would mention that the present owners of that property and I have met on multiple occasions to discuss the potential of the city acquiring that property. The amount of that proposed purchase is consistent with an independent appraisal that the city had done some time ago, really, and as we were seeking other property and that those other properties ultimately never materialized, we circled back, as Earl said, to this appraisal and this property, and staff ultimately concluded for the reasons that we've stated, and there probably are other reasons not stated that are valid as well, that this is the property that will suit the long-term needs of our citizens and this city for the next 50 years, presumably. And so, that is the recommendation to you tonight. You may have questions or wish to discuss that, but it is my hope that we will be able to approve that tonight in terms of authorizing the mayor to execute that purchase agreement in that amount. Now, I would say, as with any real estate transaction, there is the need to provide a period of time for the present owners to vacate, and the Terrace Hotel, for example, does have two or three tenants that will be given notice of the pending purchase, and we need to give that notice so that the owners can, ask them to vacate within the required short term. I think their leases are 30-day at a time, so within 30 or 60 days, presumably, they would vacate that property and we could begin the process, if approved, of demolition of the property so that we can proceed with our construction plans for their new fire station. Our fire chief may have a comment, too. He was an integral part to these examinations and talked with us about various important elements, and maybe our chief has something to say on that.
Before you do, Chief, I think it might be appropriate if we made a motion on the resolution and then have him as part of the discussion. What is that, read me that resolution.
This resolution number 2018-09, let me start again, 2018-09-10-05.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve resolution 2018-09-10-05?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears. Now, we are in discussion. Mr. Flueg, I'm sure this commission would like to hear from you, please, sir.
Yes. Quite a bit of work went into this project that Earl and I worked many hard hours trying to locate a good location that would be effective in our responses today and in the future. We had thought several times we had found the right place, but when we looked deeper, we realized that those places weren't correct. The property that we're talking about today with the resolution meets all the requirements that I can foresee in today and in the future, and keeps it on Main Street as a focal point for the community. So, I was very pleased, after our due diligence in looking at all the properties, that the best did come back to being on Main Street.
Would you like to comment about keeping it on Main Street, why that's important?
For the community, as an icon to the community, a fire station is something that's always looked at as an important part of your community, from the schools that bring their kids downtown every school year to visit us, to the occasional walk-by that wants to visit the new apparatuses and so forth.
What are some of the other primary characteristics that you look for in citing up something like this? I mean, there's probably a checklist of things that you want to hit and...
Well, we had to look at traffic patterns and traffic flows for number one, because we're gonna be entering and exit, you know, coming in and off of those egresses and ingresses on a regular basis in their emergency mode, so that was very important, to make sure that we didn't encumber any nuisances or congestion points, pinch points that we didn't need to deal with. We looked at our run volumes and locations of our higher activity points to where our response times would be within our four-minute time, which is very important for us.
Chief, I'm assuming if we were to acquire this footprint, that it, well, let me ask the question. Will acquisition of this footprint eliminate the need for fire trucks to block traffic on Main Street in order to get positioned into the firehouse?
With work in this lot, this lot meets the qualifications that would be, allow us to have a drive-through or drive-around into bay, so yes, to answer your question. We would no longer have to block traffic.
Now, there are firefighters. It's not to say they won't do it, right?
Well, you know, I'll bring it up, but that's one of the comments-
Exactly.
-that's fairly consistent whenever this discussion comes up out and about.
In fact, that issue is already being addressed at our Station Two right now with approval of the project of putting in the drive-through in it also, so we no longer have to back into the Station Two.
And I guess my other question, no one knows the future, but I can be willing, I'd be willing to bet that our needs 50 years from now will be significantly more than today. Will we have expansion opportunity in that footprint?
We looked.
Yes, sir. I think you will, based on the layout that's been given to us and the dimensions of the structure. I do think you have an opportunity there to grow on that location if that need arises, yes, yes, sir. The hope is, is that whatever structure you have just simply could be altered rather than a complete renovation like we have across the street now, where the building just simply needs to be raised. We hope to not have that issue.
This location not only being good for you on Main Street, and I would not want to say that anybody's residence, including mine, is any less significant if it's under fire than the hospital or center college, but certainly they, this is good for them. And some of the sites we looked at previously, or that you all looked at and informed us about, were in different areas of town. We're getting away from our main core, where we have some tall buildings and et cetera. So, is that a true statement?
Earl, I think it's interesting to, I think it may be worthy to note that this was not your first choice?
No, I mean, it's not that it wasn't our first, it's just one of the sites that you're evaluating, that you're trying to rank, rank those sites. You, out of necessity, I mean, you want to evaluate more than one option every time. You want to look at at least a couple of different alternatives. So, in that regard, we, this was one of the sites that we looked at initially. It was one of probably three or four sites that we developed an architectural footprint on. Then we had others that we added to that queue.
How many sites, how many sites did you look at?
We looked at the list, we identified 14. There's a couple that I can think of that we, that just didn't even get this far for one reason or another, so, you know, we probably considered 16. 14 got what we would consider an evaluation, but there was five to seven that really got a real hard scrutiny, and this one, out of that five or seven, is, we think, meets the highest number of characteristics with the highest ranking on each one of those characteristics. And again, that's including your service capacity out of that location, your access to the location, your orientation of the property itself, the size of the lot, in other words, the dimensions of the lot, the shape of the lot. The adjacency to other city services matters. You know, we, I went back and forth on that a little bit, but in the end, when you have a secure area that is the police station immediately next to your emergency response, those guys can work together during the worst-case scenario, and they have a bigger footprint to lay that down and to begin that effort. That can matter, and so all of those factors come into play.
Chief, any comment on that?
I'm sorry?
Chief Curry, any comment on that?
Yes, sir. I think it's a great spot. If you just stop and think about the traffic flow and them responding to emergencies, you know, I think it helps us being where we're at. You're in almost the center of town, so you can get to just about, you know, you can get to your major arteries, Easterville Road, Lexington Avenue, and Main Street, you know, these are your four main arteries, and you can get on those main arteries just like that with all the different events and things that we have downtown, also that lets us, you know, get to those other areas, those outskirts, if you're in a neighborhood or somewhere like that, and you've got an event going downtown. We already push traffic, when we have those special events, we already push traffic and congest those other areas. So, you're talking about just really a better and safer response in case something was to happen while we were having a downtown event. I'm a big supporter of this site and the move.
Question. My question's for Michelle. I guess, you know, how are we gonna pay for it? I know we plan to bond the building itself, but I'm sure they're gonna want, if we buy this spot, they're gonna want their money sooner than we're gonna sell bonds, so what do we?
Several years ago, whenever we started talking about needing to either repair or redo a fire station, we started putting money back to save in order to start a project. And then, whenever we kind of figured that it was gonna be a major project, we started putting even more money back to save for that project. So, now we have the cash to start that project and we can use that to purchase the land.
So, we have the second reading tonight of the ordinance for the bonds, but the land is not gonna be included in that.
No, the land will not be included in that. We'll use that for, to reimburse ourselves for the fire truck, for an apparatus. It was included in that and also to actually build the building and demolition of the land that we will have the, we have the cash to pay for the land that we saved to start the project.
Earl, what's your review for me? The rationale for leaving the current site?
The existing site that you have is, the building that you have onsite is built essentially to the property line, both to the east and the west. It does not have the depth, the property itself doesn't have the depth that you can construct a structure and also have room to pull a fire truck actually all the way out of that structure on its property unless you do what the fire department has done in the past, which is use this, the lane adjacent to the fire station and back, parallel to the back of the building, which isn't the best scenario to store a fire truck in, necessarily. The property that is to the west- The, the property that is to the west of the fire station does not belong to the city. That belongs to one of the banks. The city does not necessarily have control of that, nor has the right to guarantee access through there at all times. The, the, the bank has control of that property. There's actually multiple property owners to the west of that in little narrow strips. The property to the east is the vacant lot that is, that is more or less right up against the building. The building programming scenario, the architect went through with the Fire Department, they evaluated the number of employees, they evaluated administrative office space needs, and ultimately developed a building footprint from that discussion with the Fire Chief and the Fire Department. That requires, at the recommendation, an additional bay to the station. So just for the layperson, when you walk down the street and you look at that property, if you understand that the property lines are adjacent to the building limits on either side, then you know that you don't, simply put, have enough room to add a bay to the structure. So you can't renovate that building there and accomplish the Fire Department's goals without acquiring property at that location. Any of those properties are, do cause quite an imposition to the use of the land immediately adjacent to it. Obviously, to the west, you have a drive-through accessway that is critical for the, for the bank that, that owns the property. The, it is a developed roadway, which should indicate to the layperson that it is important to the landowner, that it, it functions as a roadway, not as a, a building. And also, to the east, there may be opportunity to the east, we don't know that. We, we can't really ascertain the motivation of the owner to grant or sell the city any property there in a, in a timely fashion. And so, in the end, that site across the street, given its proximity to the intersection of Fourth Street and Main, as the mayor indicated, requires the fire trucks to stop traffic to back in. It's just not safe on a regular basis. And it, it really, the, at the time that was located there, it was a good use, a good location probably, in, in, in the 60s when it was established. I think time has passed, the volume of traffic on Main Street's picked up, and so that that location is just not the best for a high-traffic fire station. Moving it to the west decreases in that conflict at that intersection, and also it increases the site distance for the fire trucks as they start to move, as they start to pull out of the station with sirens on. It gives the average user more time to slow down and react to the sirens as they come down the street.
Thank you, sir.
So what's the timeframe if we were to, to approve this and start in the next 30 to 60 days?
It would be the city staff's goal to go through an evaluation process where we evaluate the structure for demolition, in terms of, there are certain permits, certain things that we do, tests that you have to do in order to be permitted to demolish the structure. We would go through that process so that in, in the spring, that effort could begin, January, February. Meanwhile, we would engage the architect to do the, both the site survey and then the development, the final planning, develop a set of construction documents, so that those could be advertised in the January, February timeframe, so that hopefully in the calendar year of 2019, you would get to a completed, open structure. So your target is, is the next construction season to get everything done, meaning 2019?
I think that schedule would also contemplate using the existing fire station during the period of construction, so we would not incur costs for relocation, which would have been necessary if we rebuilt on that existing fire station location.
Well, not only cost, it's, it's disruptive to move twice, so we want to keep them there as long as we can.
Any further questions?
Some of this discussion, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Some of this discussion reminds me of the discussion we had with 911 and Magistrate Kaywood, saying how important it was to keep a lot of your emergency services together and not be divided in case there was some sort of a tragedy. And so it kind of makes sense to me that we would be trying to locate, as we have it now, the Fire Department's close, but in some other discussions, moving it away from the Police Department, City Hall, and 911 brings that point back to me that he made during that discussion.
Mr. Cottle, you had?
I guess I wanted the city manager to go back and reiterate what he said at the beginning about our city attorney and his part that he played in this, because I want to make sure that, I've, I've been down this road before, and I don't really want to go down it again, so if we could just be clear on the part he played.
Or did not play.
Which I know was zero, but if you could just repeat that.
Yes, simply put, in our very beginning of consideration of, of how to expand possibly the existing fire station with a TIF district, we recognized the potential for conflict in that, and when we began thinking about the potential conflict in that, it just became clear to me that we should not involve our city attorney in this process due to the perception of conflict if any property were to be selected within the city limits of Danville. We are small town, and so that decision, I conveyed to Mr. Dexter some 18 months ago, I guess, and he readily accepted that as being a wise course to begin this work. And the, the law firm of Stephen Dexter's, I can't think of the full name of that right now, Sheehan Barnett, thank you. You know, they, they played no role in this. The purchase documents, the lease agreements, the advice, the consultation has been with the Turner Barker Maloney Law Firm, and we had representatives of that firm earlier to meet with you tonight to talk about that purchase agreement. So the short answer is, he had absolutely no involvement in this discussion.
Thank you. Just want to make that clear.
Good job, Commissioner Cottle.
Any, any further discussions? Comments? Questions?
I just wanted to say I appreciate the hard work and due diligence from Earl and Chief Lug. I really think they did look outside the box for, for a solution, and, and as most people know, we, we have had several meetings, executive sessions, about property for the fire station, and they really brought forth several options to consider, and it just so happens that it just kept coming back to this property, so... But they were very diligent in their thoughts, and moving us forward in, in a very good way, I think, and, and I appreciate that hard work.
No further?
Well, I, yeah, I want to make another comment, because I keep, I keep squirming in my seat over here.
You need to change seats?
Yeah, there's one outside the hallway I'd like to take, right? No, I'm just kidding, though. This is an action we're going to take, and...
Maybe?
Well, okay, well, we're going to vote it up or down.
Yep.
So we're going to take an action tonight, and there's been zero involvement from our city attorney, and there's been zero involvement from our community. And I guess my question is, that's how this process has to operate? We don't have an opportunity for community input.
You, you can't, because...
You, you can or you cannot?
You cannot, because to, to, to do that in terms of community input and saying, "We'd like location A, B, or C," you, you totally neg, you totally negate the ability to acquire property at the best possible price.
I understand that, but you know, I got to get it out there, right? A part of our discussion that needs to be understood by our, our community. Because Commissioner Cottle said he'd been there, done this before, and we all knew what he was referring to, so we're walking on pins and needles with this one, but I feel good about the process that the staff has taken in getting us to this point. But this discussion is to help us, but also to help our community as well understand what we've been dealing with.
Well, I, I agree, because, you know, when we first got into this, this is honestly more than I'd hoped to pay for the, the land portion of the project. But in, after, you know, vetting out all the parcels that you did, and you know, several things have to come up, come together, one of them is a willing seller. I mean, there's lots of good places, but if they don't want to sell, you can't really make them. And places that met the other criteria that the chief mentioned, and really, there, as it turns out, there weren't that many, so the market dictates, and here we are, so...
Yeah. Well, and there were other willing sellers at some ridiculous prices well above the assessed value.
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
So, yeah, there were others, but I'm trying to just get it all out there.
And with that said, I'm going to call the question.
Oh, wait a minute, hold it. No, just...
That's a first.
Are you going to roll call this, or just...
We, we can, we can, we can do it any way you all want to do it. It's, it's a resolution, it's not an ordinance.
Well, let's not roll call, though. Let's, let's be, uh, let's not roll call.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yeah.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Serres?
Yes.
We are now in the section called Commissioners' Comments.
All right.
And I will begin by thanking the Danville Police Department for, once again, monitoring and helping to execute a successful footrace for last Saturday. Chief, my memory is not what it used to be, but I think, if memory serves me, you told us one time it took like 14 officers to pull that off, and, and, and that's early in the morning for a lot of them, because I think you all start about seven, putting cones and whatnot out. Secondly, I would like to, like to tell you about kind of an interesting little meeting that Earl and, and Ron and myself had with the two county judge candidates who wanted to know specifically what the issue was with sewer cost imperable. And that was a very productive hour and a half meeting, and I think everybody benefited, but mostly I think they got a very clear understanding of the complexity of the issue and, and clear understanding of, of the outcome of it. I apologize to the Fire Department for missing Friday's push-in. I had gone earlier that afternoon to the retirement celebration for Commissioner of Aviation, Steve Parker, who's been a big fan of, of Danville and, and the Danville Airport. And, and so, being Friday, and when that was done, I thought, well, that's the end of my week. I just, I just didn't quite cross the finish line, Chief, and I apologize for not being there. But I want to say that the next day I did go out to the, to South Station, and that fire truck is one heck of a piece of machinery.
It's a monster.
And it is. And, and, and I invite every citizen to go out and look at it. I mean, looking at it on the streets, one thing, up close and personal, it's a beast. It really is.
Well, Mayor, I'm just going to interrupt you for one second. That's one time when I'm glad you didn't show up.
Because you got to...
Or anyone else, for that matter. I had the honor to back it into the station during the push-in.
Backed it into the station?
Backed into the station.
Well, I didn't hit anything, no, 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 no.
Okay.
I, I did not back it into...
Does it need one of it?
Uh, they pushed it in, so I got to steer, and that was one of the highlights of being able to sit in this seat, so... But it is, it's, it's a truly amazing piece of equipment, and Mr. Dexter was, I don't know where he went, but Mr. Dexter was also there with his adorable little boys that got to enjoy it also. If you all had shown up, you could have piled in there, too.
Yep.
Your loss. So, and, and I'm just going to mention this again, that Commissioner Cottle had two losses that day. That's why he's wearing his Wall County shirt. Just got to rub that in a little bit.
Well, I was going, I was going to bring it up in my little section, but I'm a good sport. It was a good game, but the Rebels took it home on Friday night, so I don't mind wearing the black and gold. Next year's another year. See how it goes.
I'm working on a shirt that we can pass back and forth, so... I didn't have time to bedazzle that one for you either, sorry.
Shoot, that's too bad. Good kids, good game.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a great game. It was a great game.
Any other comments? And I want to thank Rick Serres for, once again, hosting the bike ride after the race.
Yeah, thank you. The mayor and I rode the whole 24 miles together. We made sure that everybody made the trip, because we were riding in the back.
On the fire truck?
Pardon?
Were you guys on the fire truck right behind him?
Yeah. We were the smoking butts. I also want to thank the Danville Police Department, because they did help lead us out of town, and we really appreciate that. It really comes as a great appreciation to our guests from out of town. They like that extra touch, that you shut the Main Street down for a few seconds while we took the bike lane and took us all the way out through the bypass, and then we're on our way in, in pretty comfortable movement right there. Also, we saw in great force the Danville Police Department at the barbecue festival, as rainy as muddy as it was, they were very visible, and I don't think there was any trouble out there at all, but usually there is not, but so, but we're glad to see you there. And long as I'm speaking, you know, we always have a lot of fun here in Danville, there's always a lot of activity, so this weekend, when it comes to exercise activity, we have the .5K going on by the United Way on Centers Track this Friday, and in the morning of the following day, Saturday, the Jaguar Jog is happening in Junction City that afternoon. If you still haven't had enough, I can take you on a nice little bike ride called Tour de Ville. And then on Sunday, we have the Moonlight Mile, returns to Effer McDowell and at the Wellness Center, so no one can say we're not an active community.
There you go. Mr. Scott, you're chomping to say something here?
Not in this section, but we do have, as part of the agreement to purchase real property, the need to adopt a resolution authorizing lease agreements with those two properties, so I'd ask that you return to that topic as we continue the business.
Let's, let's, do we have any more Commissioner comments?
Yeah, I want to make a couple announcements. The Frank X Walker Litterer Festival Number Five is, starts Monday, the 17th of September to the 21st. We have guest readers going into our city and county schools, and Montessori, and DCA, and KSD at the fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade. And then Thursday and Friday, Frank X Walker will be in town, he's going to do some presentations and teach some classes, and, no, Chief, I'm not going to skip Thursday night. Thursday at 9:00 a.m., Danville High School Auditorium, Gravely Hall, the city and county, well, all those five school districts, their eighth graders and the 11th graders are going to go to a play entitled "The Meeting" with Martin Luther King and Malcolm X and Malcolm X's bodyguard. Of course, Malcolm X's bodyguard is none other but our police chief, Chief Gray. He'll be onstage performing at 9:00 a.m., Thursday, September 20th, and then a repeat performance at 7:00 p.m., Thursday night, which is open to the entire community. So please come out and support this endeavor. We're asking for a contribution from adults Thursday night for $5 or more, and for students, $2 or whatever. If you don't have $5, still, please come, it's going to be a great program. Frank will be present again at both of those performances to do an introduction and a talkback, and we're hoping enough folks in the community will come out, so we'll have enough money to pay the bill, because we're trying to let all the students, eighth grade, 11th graders, go to the play for free, no cost to the schools. So please come out Thursday, September 20th, and support this endeavor, and throw some things to Chief Gray if you so desire, but real historical play.
Any further comments?
Chief Gray?
Chief, you got anything to add? Chief, you got anything to add?
I'll wait till Thursday night.
There you go. Leave it all out there.
Leave it on the...
Ron, you want to go back?
Yes, sir. The second part of that purchase concerns Resolution Number 2018-09-10-06 entitled "A Resolution Approving a Lease Agreement." Whereas as a part of an agreement to purchase real property located 451 West Main Street and 461 West Main Street, it is appropriate for the city to lease the property to the sellers or their affiliated corporations for a 30-day period immediately following the closing of this transaction. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville, Kentucky that the proposed lease agreements with Danville Terrace, Inc. and Sam Dexter Insurance Agency, Inc. are approved and that the mayor or mayor pro tem is authorized to execute the agreements dated this 10th day of September, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to approve Resolution 2018-09-10-06?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Thank you, Mr. Cottle. We're in discussion if there is any.
This is to allow time for any tenants that may be in the one property to be able to relocate, but it's also for just the owners to relocate as well.
Yes, out of the Sam Dexter Insurance Agency, they have need to move equipment and so forth. So, this grants both properties 30 days and the lease for that is included in the purchase price and it's for a period of 30 days each.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item nine is the payment of the bills. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move we approve the bill list and payment of the bills in the amount of $712,071.75.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins and Cottle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 10 is the second reading of Ordinance Number 1919. That is in regards to the fiscal year 18 and 19 tax rates. Do I hear a motion? Do we need a motion? No, we just...
Yes. We have to do roll call.
Yeah, need to roll call. Do it. So, we need a motion for the second reading?
I move to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 1919.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. How about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Serres. Discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
You got a roll call.
Oh, excuse me.
And I think she has to, do you have to read it?
Yes, she has to read it, sorry.
This is a second, a second reading of Ordinance 1919 and ordinance establishing ad valorem tax rates for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and penalties for non-payment.
Okay. Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Parris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Serres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Item 11 is the second reading of Ordinance Number 1920. This is in regards to the general obligation bond, Series 2018. Do I hear a motion for the second reading?
Move for approval of the second reading of Ordinance 1920.
Mr. Cottle's, or second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, discussion? Madam Clerk, read.
I wanted to say again what this was for. This is for the new fire station that we will build and, as well as reimbursement from the purchase of the fire truck. We've paid for that and this is the reimbursement for it. Michelle says I'm good.
Okay. This is an ordinance of the city of, City of Danville, Kentucky, authorizing the issuance of its general obligation public project bond, Series 2018, to pay or reimburse cost of public projects for the city and approving the forms of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, maintaining the heretofore created sinking fund, approving and authorizing the advertisement and acceptance of the bids for the purchase of the bonds, providing for a continuing disclosure undertaking with respect to the bonds and the city's compliance therewith, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Parris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Serres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Item 12 is the second reading of Ordinance Number 1921. This is the budget amendment for the fiscal year 2018-19. Do I hear a motion for the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Serres, Commissioner Atkins, thank you. Discussion?
What, what are we doing here? This is a...
Remember, we had to add a little bit at the last meeting. How much was that, about $500 and something?
I have to look it up. It's about, yeah, about 100, 150,000.
150,000, excuse me. There's a little difference there.
Yeah, 150,000 in order to...
I knew there were five in there somewhere.
The budget, the budget amendment, Michelle, I'm interested in some reading. The, the budget amendment addresses municipal aid fund. You're allocating an additional $150,000 to compensate for the construction of the Second Street Bridge.
Got you. Okay.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
I'm gonna read it if that's okay.
Oh, yes.
An ordinance amending a portion of ordinance Number 1915, which established the City of Danville, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year 7/1/18 through 6/30/19 by appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Serres?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Parris?
Yes. Item 13 is the wayfinding project, which we tabled at the last meeting, which was August the 27th. So, tonight's night to further that conversation. Mr. Scott, you got any directions on, or any comments about this? I guess, I guess really the appropriate thing for me to do is, is take, take a motion and a second and put it in discussion. That said, do I have a motion?
I move for approval of the, would it be the design concept as offered by Carmen or how would, what would be the proper...
Acceptance of wayfinding master plan.
In completed form.
What Earl said.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Now we're in discussion.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to that motion. And my amendment reads that we provide a balance of recognizable slots in Sector 1 sign locations to the following economic interests in our community. And that being Perle Battlefield, Wilderness Trail Distillery, the Great American Dollhouse Museum, and Pioneer Playhouse.
And if you don't mind, what section of, of, of the town is that in for the, for the public?
Sector 1 signs are those the furthest out in the plan that gets you off the bypass headed towards town. And there is a north sector, identify a west slash southwest sector, and identify a south, southeast sector. So, it's not adding any additional signs, but it's telling staff as they begin to implement this plan that Pioneer Playhouse is my example tonight. It's very visible on the outskirts of town in the south, southeast sector. That's coming in from Stanford. And it's very, obviously should be very visible there, but it is not noticeable or recognizable from the north end of our town nor from the west, southwest sector of our town. So, all I'm saying is that we consider the slots and as far out as we can go in Sector 1, that we begin to identify these four economic interests in our community.
Do I hear a motion to accept the amendment? Well, I've got it. You wanna...
I don't, I don't mind to amend the motion.
We can do that, too.
Further along to just keep the discussion going, more or less, but...
Yeah, all, all it really does is that if these four things that have been identified in this plan bring economic vitality to our community, then all four of them need to be identified as places as far out as we can identify. And somebody would say, why not eat soul this and eat that and that is it. They're already there.
There's been a request and I would, I'd ask the commission's acceptance of the request to have Ms. Kirchner address it, if you would, if, if, if you have any kind of an opinion about it in terms of how it, how the master plan is and this amendment. And, and Ms. Brown, if you want to come up too?
Jennifer, I was...
Blame him. Don't blame me.
I've been called up here by a mayor before and really made some bad comments because I wasn't prepared. So, I've learned once.
Blame him. Blame him.
I don't want to speak too much to this, and, and this is the first I'm hearing your act, your motion, Mr. Commissioner Atkins, but I would say that to have a conversation about isolating four of our most popular attractions in Boyle County is an intense one. I would note that downtown Danville is our top attraction. Constitution Square is the birthplace of the state. So, the visitor center is where we like to funnel everyone to come so we can then promote everybody. So, if we were gonna have a conversation about making a tier of our top four attractions, I think that's a much more in-depth conversation and to alter a plan that's been going on for close to a year without further discussion concerns me.
Well, I don't, I don't, well, I don't want to debate that with you, but here's what I'm saying. I said to provide a balance. I didn't pick these four places out. The plan picked them out. Somebody influenced the plan to where these four people, these four places rose to the surface. They are in Sector 1 and they're in Sector 2. And to me, I, I, I think they should be. I didn't pick out some other places because I think those other places that someone might call to my attention are already very visible in all four sectors of Sector 1 and Sector 2.
If I understand your amendment correctly, sorry Denise, it's, it's calling upon staff to, to look, look for a balance. It's not, it's not directing and saying specifically you will, you won't, this is who, this is who not.
That's right.
So, you're not saying just those four. You're saying, because Amber Bev's about to come online. I mean, we'll have a lot of economic drivers. We do have a lot of economic drivers for tourism.
And that's what I really like about the slots because these things are changeable. As things grow or things disappear from the landscape, they can be changed if it's the holiday season and we're directing folks directly to, let's say, the barbecue festival or the Constitution Square for a certain thing. That's what I like about it. But if I was to be more specific, of the four I've just named, one has nine sides on, signs or slots in Sector 1 and Sector 2. Another one has four. One has, I think it was five, and the other one may have four as well. So, all I'm saying is that in, in my vantage point, I think these things are outliers that draw economic interest to our community. Not taking away from anybody else, but I'm saying these four, as I look at the plan, need to be balanced out like everything else in the plan.
Well, these are not temporary signs that can be interchanged.
Yeah, they are.
And change, no, they're not.
No.
No. The slots are gonna be interchangeable.
No.
They're very expensive to change.
Not once they're up, they're up. I mean, they could be changed in the future, yes, but we're not gonna go out there every weekend and change the slots.
And, and these four places, hopefully will be there forever, but as an example, you, these signs that we're purchasing have a protected cover on them and they have, these signs are gonna be in slots and, and these, these businesses are gonna be in slots in the signs. They're not gonna be painted permanently on the signs in those three locations.
Let me direct that to Earl. Earl, you want to clarify that?
They're permanent.
The, the signs will be cast essentially, and so you would, to, to relocate the name or alter the name, you, you physically debolt this cast and you put a new cast on.
Yeah.
And the, it, those are not designed to be changed out seasonally.
Well, that, well, that's an exaggeration.
Right, and just to confirm, to confirm that, I'm not saying, you know, but to confirm, no, they're not designed to be changed out seasonally, but in the event over the course of three to five years, if a business relocates or changes its, its, its name and, or whatever that is on there, if Constitution Square is renamed to Foundation Park, I mean, it, you can, you can address that retitling without replacing the entire structural sign.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I think one, I'm a, I'm a huge fan of community involvement and public participation and hearing what the community wants. I think signage is a tricky project in that category because it's not about public opinion in its entirety. Signage is based on a clear, concise system to navigate traffic. So, your geography determines how many signs you have, not your economic value necessarily or your popularity even. It's where you're located. So, you may have six signs because you're remote or the Community Arts Center, which is a huge driver of economic activity in our community, doesn't need as many because they're right there on Main Street. So, when we had community input talking about what matters, I think that's incredibly valuable, but I think that that's one pot of information that informs the process and the traffic regulations and the cost of the series infrastructure, safety, adhering to state regulations is the deciding factor of how things work.
Well...
To her point, if we're gonna funnel everyone through the visitor center, then why not just direct them to the visitor center for information?
Well...
Yeah. Well, mostly, even beyond the visitor center, I would say Constitution Square Park and, dare I say, Whistler Park. I mean, Millennium Park, all of those things.
And this, well, I just want to provide a balance of recognizable slots in Sector 1 sign locations and some, well, these are the four places I picked out to ask staff to take a look at. If somebody wants to add someone else to this list, that's fine, but it's just a, it's just a chance to, to provide a balance.
Are you asking staff to look at this or are you asking them to do this?
He's asking them to look at it.
Yeah. If we, if we pass the wayfinding proposal as is, staff's gonna do what with it, Earl?
We're gonna implement it as it's sitting there.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And so, this is just saying as they begin to implement, to take a look if there can be a way to provide a balance. Really not changing anything. They might decide not to do anything. But if they look like I have over the last two or three, four weeks at this thing and these, these places have all been discussed, why not provide a balance?
Have you been to all of the wayfindings meetings?
All except for one.
I think we just...
Mr. Atkins, on your suggestion, I'm losing my voice here tonight, excuse me. You know, Pioneer Playhouse does have, have a huge impact on Danville in terms of tourism, the quality of theater they provide and, and the tourism attraction, but they are a seasonal venue, you know? So, in considering that for implementation, the staff would need to consider that is a seasonal, essentially summer stock event. And so, while we might consider it, you would be not allowing another attraction to be successful if they were equally, or, you know, if they were on par with the others the rest of the year when they're not in effect, for example. That's one of the complications. I'm not necessarily speaking against your suggestion, but it's just the fact that there are differences that exist there.
I appreciate your efforts there, Commissioner Atkins, because I voiced that concern last time we met about some imbalance and I had numbers on different things like that as well. I know there's the argument of just getting people downtown and then sorting it out and that we do have, we have our phones and so forth to find places. I think the other side of the argument, and as I travel myself and you pass towns, you don't know that there's a dollhouse there or a bicycle museum, so you're not looking for it, but now you're cued to it and it might be a place that you're gonna come back to or if you have time, stop. So, I think that's the other side of the argument in terms of not having a balance of dollhouse at one point and dollhouse at another, et cetera, et cetera.
Ms. Kirchner has made the point to me that while we're talking about signage, that's, that's, that's not the way of the future. It's, it's gonna be digital.
It's truly not.
My kids, my kids are gonna pick this up... My kids are going to pick this up. They're not going to look at a sign. They're going to see whatever this says.
Well, and that's the case with any industry. The consumer is a lot more educated before they ever even reach your establishment. So chances are that nine out of 10 people are already going to have researched Danville and know where they're going. And honestly, there are very few travelers that a sign on this road is going to make them make that turn because...
Well, I don't want to throw the whole thing away, but then why even have signs? Why even have this project?
I think that's a valid question to ask.
Well, it is. And that's, I mean, that's what I've been asking the whole time.
Every visitor that comes into the visitor's center, our biggest leisure travel is the baby boomer doing just that, on a road trip off the beaten path. They don't want 75, so they come in. And when they come in, they have all their stuff printed. They know where they're going, whether it be Pioneer or... They ask for restaurant recommendations. We saw X, Y, and Z online. Which one do you like best? But the advancements that Google has made, I mean, they have street cameras all over our entire country. They have collected more data and navigate people better than we could ever even hope to. So complementing that system that's already in place, that's at least the position the CBB took. So we invested all of our money into our digital presence because that's where we're having the most effect and we make the most impact. So we have designed a responsive website that rivals Google, that has all of Google built within our website. So anytime you're coming here, if that was the case, hey, what am I looking for? What do I want to do? Within seconds, there is any number of digital options for you to figure it out. And then people who do want paper in their hand, they come to us and that's where we give that and recommendations.
This amendment was not intended to take us down this path. If I remember, two weeks ago, Commissioner Cottle made a motion to add one sign someplace in town. And that was great. And I thought at one time we were going to pass it. All this just says is that we try to provide a balance. We look at it and see if there's any inequities in what's being proposed. I'd like the entire plan, but when I got to spending time and marketing where signs were going to be located and what the signs were going to say, I just found some imbalances in my own personal opinion. And I think we sort of alluded to that two weeks ago. And so I said, well, let's don't change this thing. Let's just put it out there and let everybody know that we're going to take a look at it. If we decide to put money in one sign in each of the four sectors, Sector 1, that's the furthest outside of town that we're going to go. What would be on those four signs and how could we provide a balance and what we want people to know about our community when they arrive on the outskirts of town that have not used GPS?
Mr. Scott?
With that fuller understanding that Mr. Atkins has just provided to staff, would you, as a commission, think it appropriate if you do approve the plan as recommended to you with the caveat that as we seek to provide interpretation and balance on that, if we have any implementation variations, that we come back to you and take your approval for those? Would that be an appropriate process?
And that's what you proposed two weeks ago, and I think is still appropriate, yes.
So we have an amended motion, right?
No, we don't.
Let's summarize or let's circle the wagons.
All right.
I think Commissioner Cottle made a motion to approve the wayfinding master plan as presented.
Right.
Commissioner, and that was seconded.
Yep.
During discussion, Commissioner Atkins, I think as we've digested your earlier remarks, I think the amendment, if I'm restating you correctly, would be this, that staff have the discretion to, during the implementation process, if any suggested revisions are made, that they be presented to you prior to implementation.
Yeah.
If that is the summary of your remarks, that is an amendment that will need a second.
I think Commissioner Cottle changed his original motion to...
I'm saying for the sake of clarity, I would appreciate that be a second.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
That's legalese, right?
That's right. So let's get a second to that amendment.
Do I hear a second to that amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Seres.
Now let's take a roll call vote on the amendment to the motion.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Seres?
Yes.
The motion has been amended. Now you are ready to call a question on the motion as amended.
And I'm calling the question.
Okay.
We beat this one to death.
I was just going to say that. We have beat this to death.
So I'm calling the question. Now...
Unnecessarily, we have beat this to death.
I'm ready to make a voice vote unless somebody wants a roll call vote. Voice vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
And I should note, just for clarification, that in fact is precisely no different than what staff would do in the implementation of any master plan you would accept.
That's why...
So for the sake of public clarity and clarity in the press...
Item 14 is resolution 2018-09-10-12.
That's why I hesitated on my vote because that's what I thought we were doing anyway. Thank you.
This is in regards to the surplus item approval. Surplus item being one gently-used ladder truck.
26 years old.
Low miles, only driven to church on Sunday.
Do I hear a motion to surplus?
I move to approve resolution 2018-07-09-02.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We're in discussion?
Do we have a bar?
No.
Not at this time.
I think my kids may be interested in that.
I was going to...
I was going to submit an online bit.
Absolutely.
Seeing no further discussion, I call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 15 is resolution 2018-09-10-03. This is the Bluegrass Community Action Agency Agreement.
Mayor, simply put, this is just a resolution that approves information sharing with Bluegrass Community Action. It's one that we've entered into for quite some time and this is just a renewal of that agreement.
So moved?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Cottle. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Is there anything else from staff or permission that we need to address? Seeing none, chair entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
How about a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.